Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council. If I can have call of the roll, please.
Mayor Andy Madellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cece Foley-Galligos.
Here.
Councilmember Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Donald Hawley.
Present.
Councilmember Derek Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Will Oliver.
Here.
And Councilmember Charles Rigby.
Here.
Thank you so much, Sonia, and joining us this evening, not only the pastor from New Harvest Christian Fellowship, but the host of one of the largest national night out parties ever, Pastor Tim Echeverria, who will be leading us in the invocation. Tim, if he would, please.
One of the biggest. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, police department, fire department, just want to say I'm honored. And yesterday was a beautiful day.
Yes, it was.
So we're just going to bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, just for your goodness, your grace, and God for your mercy, Lord God. Father, we pray, God, over our city, God. We thank you for the city of Madera, Lord God. We pray your favor, your blessing, God. Even tonight, God, we pray for your wisdom, God. We pray, God, for understanding, God, your discernment, God, that everything, God, that we do in the city magnifies your name, God. I pray your blessing, God, over our police department, God, over our city officials, God, our mayor, Lord God. We pray over every single decision tonight, God, that's taking place, Lord. And Father, we need you, Lord God. We pray, God, that you would guide us, lead us. And God, we pray for your favor, God, and your blessing over our city, Lord. We love you, God, and God, we thank you, Lord. And in the name of Jesus, Lord God, we pray. And everyone says, amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Tim. We appreciate it. Councilman Hawley, would you lead us?
Okay. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at that time. Is there anyone wishing to speak under this definition of public comment?
Myra Miranda, Madera County Public Health.
Alan Gilmore, Madera County Public Health. And we just wanted to come tonight to recognize the relationship that the Public Health Department has established with the city council. And whenever you have relationships, there are people that are involved. And one of the key people for us in terms of our work around tobacco and public health has been our staff person, Myra Miranda, and all the work that she's been doing with all of you guys and ladies. And so we wanted to just come and bring you some news about her future endeavors.
Just to make it official, I, as of August 4th, I will no longer be with the Madera County Public Health Department. I've taken a position with the California Department of Public Health in their tobacco control branch. And just wanted to come here and thank you all for working with me and for taking the time out of your schedules to hear what I had to say as a tobacco control professional and also as a citizen or community member of the city. And thank you so much for your time and your commitment, and I've appreciated working with all of you. And this is not a goodbye. It's more of a see you later, and I will hopefully be seeing you around. So, thank you.
Yes, you will. Councilman Hawley has a comment.
Yes. Miranda, you know, I remember when we first started working together, you've always been that person that had a good idea about tobacco and got me involved real deeply. And really, I'm going to miss you, and I thank you for all your work that you've done for our city and county. And I wish you well on your new job in Sacramento, and that way we'll get more laws passed, I hope. Well, thank you anyway for working with me.
Thank you, Councilman.
Myra, I wanted to say thank you, obviously, for your service and for your partnership on various tobacco control initiatives that you've brought to the city of Madera. And quite honestly, have opened our eyes to many different things in that regard. And I'd also like to thank you for your help and involvement with our Madera Young Professionals group. Myra has been one of the most pivotal members of that group. She's been a part of our steering committee for the Madera Young Professionals and definitely been one I can lean on and others can lean on. So thank you so much for your help with that initiative as well. And I'm fairly confident that you'll be a future boomerang story.
(laughing) At the top.
And ultimately, hopefully, return back to the valley and to Madera and to continue to serve here. So thank you again for your service and your friendship.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Myra. It has been a great working relationship as well as a friendship with all of us. So we certainly wish you well. You will certainly be missed. And it's my understanding that she dropped the young professionals as a reference and Councilman Will Oliver's name, and I think that's how you got the job in Sacramento, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I had to use my relationship.
That'd be the opposite.
We wish you all the best of luck. We know you're going to do very, very well. And we look forward to hearing from you in the future in your new position and coming back to visit us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and ask for a late distribution announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, members of the public are advised that documents related to the following agenda item were distributed to the council less than 72 hours before this meeting. Under B, Section B, the Consent Calendar, Item B5, the subject matter is in agreement with David Hale. The report and supporting documents were distributed to the council this evening. Extra copies are available at the podium for members of the public wishing a copy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sonia. Now we will move into our workshop. It's my honor and my pleasure to introduce Mr. Thomas Greasy from the Madera Irrigation District, who will be giving us a very informative presentation. Tommy?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. I have a brief presentation today. Actually, it's usually a long presentation, but we're going to make it a brief presentation and then open up for discussion and questions at the end. So let me get this fired up here, and we'll dive right in. So just a little history on myself. I'm a local, long-term Maderan, grew up here, went to Dixieland School and Madera High School, went on to Fresno State. Families all here locally in Madera. Came back, went off into the consulting world. Actually did some work at one point for the city of Madera, doing some urban water management planning. My prior as a consultant, and then came back locally to work for the irrigation district. Started a family here and wanted to be closer to home. So it's great to be back, serving our community, especially on such an important topic as water. So here at Madera Irrigation District, what is it that we do? Well, in most of our meetings, we like to start off by just reading our mission statement. So it's here on the screen for you, and I'll go ahead and do that. Our mission is to obtain and manage affordable surface water and groundwater supplies in a manner which will ensure the long-term viability of irrigated agriculture in the district. We are an irrigation district, but one of the points I hope that city council takes away from this today is our role is vital to the city's water supply, and we'll explain why that is. So some basics about the district. We encompass about 140,000 acres of farmland. About 90,000 of that is actually irrigated agriculture. A big share of that is actually the city of Madera, about 9,000 acres. We operate 300 miles of canals and 150 miles of pipelines. So 150 miles of pipelines, most of those I can walk down. They're large diameter pipelines that were installed well over 50 years ago, most of them at the end of their useful life. So we have a big challenge there. I like to put that in perspective. If you put them end to end, you could go from here to Oakland. So that's the amount of infrastructure just in pipelines that we maintain. 300 miles of canals. So if you put our canals end to end, you could go to Oakland and back. So a lot of infrastructure to maintain and take care of. We have about 700 customers that we serve. Those are individual growers that may have multiple turnouts or multiple parcels that they farm, but 700 users. We're a special act district governed by the California Water Code. So we're a special district, a public agency. We're not a division of the county or anyone else. We're our own public agency formed under the California Water Code. And we have a five-member board of directors. Here's a map in general of our system. You can see Hensley Lake up here. Millerton Lake is a little bit further to the south. In general, we follow the 99 corridor all the way from the San Joaquin River almost to the 152 turnout there up in the Fairmead area. And then out to, you know, Road 20, Road 16, as you move westerly. The purple shades on here are infrastructure. You can see we serve through a lot of that 300 miles of canals and 150 miles of pipe are shown there. As I mentioned before, 9,400 acres of the city of Madera. And I think the city is about 10,000 acres, give or take. So a majority of the city is actually in Madera Irrigation District. And your parcels, homeowners do pay assessments to the district. About 116,000 acres of original district land and 14,800 acres of subordinate. So these are lands that were brought in later with the construction of actually Hensley Lake. Oops. Map showing the relation. Again, takeaway from this, look at the yellow boundary. That's the city of Madera. And the red boundary is Madera Irrigation District. So as you can see, the heart of our district is the city of Madera. And by us serving surface water and managing the water supplies around the city, that truly protects the city's supply of groundwater. So if we weren't here bringing in these surface water supplies since 1920, the environment would look a lot different, and the city wouldn't be what it is today as far as water supplies. So again, it's critical that we maintain our water supplies to protect the city and your water supply, which is 100% groundwater. Some interesting history of MID. We actually formed in 1920, originally formed to construct Friant Dam. We actually owned the property where the dam sits today. We had the mineral rights to construct, used for the construction, and we had, through a series of lawsuits with Miller and Lux, actually obtained some water rights. Unfortunately, World War II hit. At that time, there wasn't much money locally to construct the facilities. The United States of America stepped up to build the Central Valley Project, so they took it over, bought the rights from the district for $300,000, and they also agreed to build our distribution system. So we'd be looking a little different today as far as water if we had actually built the dam. Our first Bureau Reclamation contract was signed in 1939, and then we acquired the Madera Canal Irrigation Company in 1950. That was actually what started the city of Madera lumber or wood. The flume that floated down lumber from the sugar pine logging mill ended up in Madera. That water that was used for the flume was put to use for agriculture. That's what started the Madera Canal Irrigation Company. With that, we actually obtained those original water rights from the late 1800s, and the district still enjoys those rights today. Some of the original facilities that were constructed in the 1870s, we still use today up there in the mountains in Sierra. So pretty interesting history there. And it's almost 100 years since the district was formed, and we plan on doing a nice history book in 2020. So those pre-14 water rights are actually off of Big Creek diversion, the Merced River watershed. We take water from that river shed, bring it into a man-made canal, channel, and dump it into the Fresno River watershed, which we use here in Madera. We also have a Soquel diversion, which is off the San Joaquin River watershed with another man-made canal up in the mountains that can bring water to the Fresno River watershed. And then, of course, we have rights off of the Fresno River, which are still enjoyed today. Here's a map showing where those facilities are up in the mountains, up by Tenaya Lodge, up in the Willow Creek area, and then the Chilcut Dam above Bass Lake is where those structures actually are located. Our contracts with the Bureau Reclamation, there's two different types of contracts. We have both, Class 1 and Class 2. Class 1 used to be considered a firm supply for agricultural users. We have an 85,000 acre foot Class 1 contract. Until recently, most years, you would get 100% or close to 100% of those supplies. As you probably heard, we actually received 0% allocations recently for two years in a row. That really hurt our water supplies. And I'm sure the city saw those impacts of no surface water deliveries in our district in two years ago. So that was tough. Class 2 contracts are provided water after the Class 1 contracts are made whole, and we enjoy a contract of 186,000 acre feet of water. We also have a contract for Hensley Lake. We are the only operator off of Hensley Lake. We pay for a fixed amount of 24,000 acre feet, but in reality, that watershed can produce far more than that. As an example, this year, we saw about over 250,000 acre feet come down that Fresno River. So pretty amazing. So if you add those up, it's a significant amount of surface water that we have access to that we can put to use here locally to provide to our growers and preserve that aquifer. This water's not free. These are costs from this year. They actually ended up being reduced because there's just so much water in the system. But you can see, our cost for our Friant Class 1 contract water is $73.96 an acre foot. We lose, on average, about 30 to 40% of that water in our distribution system. So our cost out of pocket to buy that can increase significantly. Now, what we charge our growers this year is $95 an acre foot, which some of them still complain is too high. But these numbers that we're paying actually for our water that we get and then still maintain our system and operate it are continuing to increase, and the cost of bringing the surface water in is going up significantly. As I mentioned, for Hensley Lake or Hidden Dam, we also have the contract there is about $66, $67 an acre foot. So, not cheap. Additional expenses, obviously, we have to maintain and operate all of this infrastructure. And again, a lot of these were put in in the 40s, 50s, or earlier. They are at the end of their useful life. I'm sure the city's well familiar with that, especially your engineering department, about the ticking time bomb of infrastructure and getting in there and replacing all that and those costs associated with it. So we are working very hard on replacing the infrastructure, upgrading it, and building stuff that can last another 100 years. Big list of other agencies we're part of. We also have members of power agencies at the dams. Friant Dam has power generation. We're a member agency of that. We also have power plants on the Madera Canal that help us produce revenues to bring that water cost down so our growers can get more affordable water. Just some examples of our facilities. We put a lot of automation in our systems recently. New recording devices, new pipelines. Again, all of this infrastructure is fairly large. It's hard to see the scale in these pictures, but on this picture, you can see the size of a person standing up there. So these facilities move large volumes of water and are not cheap to maintain and replace. Some of these road crossings, we're on the verge of failure. And obviously, that's important to get those things fixed. So these are our priority today is to get the, all the infrastructure under the roads replaced and repaired. Here's an example of a temporary-permanent facility. It was put in 25 years ago. It was supposed to be a temporary facility, so we've had to go back in, replace that. And this is the product after we're done. Again, we have our own engineering department, four engineers on staff. We do all the design drawings, as-built drawings, all in-house. It saves a lot of costs to not having to go out to public bidding. I can actually stand up in this pipe here. It's over 6 feet in diameter. Another project we recently completed, you can see some of our old canals that used to be out on a rural road. This is, I think, on 23. It's got cars going 85 miles an hour, and it's about a foot off the side of the road. So priority to get those things replaced and put underground. We recently did that, and you can see the end product here, nice and safe. Maintenance costs go down. A lot of benefits to that. So again, all in-house. District's been receiving a lot of awards recently. We've kind of tried to show our growers the investment that we're making, so we're reaching out to apply for these awards. We actually received the USBR Regional Directors Award, so that's all of California, big chunk of Oregon, Nevada. The regional director gets to pick one agency for that award for improvements and their efforts, and we won that. We're very proud of that. We also got ASC, American Society of Civil Engineering Award, for that pipeline project along the road there. We take our transparency very serious at the district. That is important to us. And so we actually were awarded the transparency certificate from the California Special District Authority. And to qualify from that, we also got the District of Distinction Award. So that's, we're very proud of that. A big part of that is training for our board members and staff, along with transparency efforts. So just to bring this in close, I want to remind the council again of where the city sits and your water supply. Being 100% groundwater, it's vital that we reduce our extractions from that aquifer as much as possible on the agricultural side. And so that's what we're trying to do. We're also trying to make efforts to put more in. We actually just had a presentation meeting with Sustainable Conservation Group today, where we're working on on-farm recharge efforts. We're looking at locating new recharge basins. We're partnering with Madera County. We actually are partnering with them on the Ellis Street Basin, which has a lot of extra capacity and takes a ton of water. We've been pumping water into that basin pretty much since January, and they're partnering with us on that. I want to take this opportunity also to thank the city of Madera's staff for working with us through this very interesting wet winter we had, where we started running water and running our system. And as you know, a lot of the city's stormwater ends up in our distribution system. So when those storms hit, and we're already running water, you're putting stormwater on top of irrigation district water. But we made it through without any damage or really serious flooding occurring within the city, and we were able to move that water out and make adjustments to make everything work. A lot of times, we shut down for the winter. We move into stormwater mode. This time, we were doing both all the way into March. So it was a lot of work from your staff on the utility side to team on that and get water pushed around to different basins. So that was a big thanks to your crew there. I also want to take this time, I know, coming off the drought, there were a lot of challenges put towards the city, your leadership, especially on the conservation side, and that's never easy. It's, and we deal with it too. When you take a commodity that you have to sell to fund your entity, and you don't have it or you reduce that amount, but you still have to pay the bills. It can be a real challenge, along with getting everybody to understand why it's important to conserve. We actually took, followed your lead on the Fourth Street project with landscaping. We recently completed a similar project at our office, and we put all, ripped out all of our turf, well, majority of it, and put in drop tolerant landscaping. So we're following your lead there, and we're looking for ways to share and work together. Obviously, there's the big topic, which we'll be in here, I'm sure, very soon, talking about, which is SIGMA, which is Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. We will need to start working together. The city and MID entered into an MOU, I guess it was about a year ago, a little over a year ago, to partner on that effort. And with the city of Madera being in MID, a majority of it, it's critical that we work together. I think there's a lot of win-wins there for us as we move forward. So that's my presentation. I do want to open it up and have some dialogue and questions and answer period.
Great, Tommy. Thank you very much for that presentation. You're absolutely right. We're vital to one another, MID and the city of Madera. So we appreciate you coming down and giving us that information. And I think we need to have this ongoing periodical presentation and dialogue between the two of us to make sure that we're both trying to achieve the same thing. But I do want to talk just a little bit about the cost. You had mentioned the cost, expenses with having that many miles of pipeline and canals going from here to Oakland. It has to be an ongoing expense, maintenance, new infrastructure, things like that. So $95 an acre foot, that's up from maybe, if you can tell me, over the last five or 10 years. And in your opinion, where do you see the next five or 10 years, even in the future, those rates?
Yeah. So we need to change, and we are going to change, the way we do business at MID. One of the problems we have is at $95 an acre foot, or higher, which we were the prior year, fortunately or unfortunately, we have an aquifer that a lot of growers feel that they could pump from cheaper. So when we look at our use, not this year, things have changed. We've done a lot of education recently, but 2016 year, about 50% of our turnouts were actually active, believe it or not. Only 50%. So that's good news and bad news. The good news is, if we can get all of our growers taking that water when it's available, with no improvements to our system as far as water supply projects, we can move a significantly larger amount of water more efficiently and preserve more water in that aquifer. So what we need to be looking at, and we are, and SIGMA is impacting this, obviously, is how do you get that cost per acre foot down to a point where it's a no-brainer? And even if it is close to pumping rates or you have just basically no choice, why wouldn't you use it? That way, it promotes everyone using it, and also creates a more equitable way of collecting fees across the district. So last year, you had about 50% of the growers actually funding a majority part of our district, and the grower right next door using the aquifer was getting the same benefit. So how do you do that? Well, we need to look closer at our land use or our land-based charges, our assessments. And of course, that involves 218. As you all well know, there's a challenge to that. But with the public outreach, we've been doing the education process. I think it's something that we can get accomplished.
I know you're doing quite a bit of outreach and education, CDEs and things of that nature to that next-generation farmer on how we can stretch our waters as best as possible. Any other questions from?
Yeah, Tommy, I appreciate you coming out again and making yourself available. I look forward to continuing to partner with you personally, as well as hopefully as a group. Tell me a little bit more about the recharge basins projects that you foresee in the future. I know of a few that we have of our own, but how those might work together, maybe possible locations?
Yeah. We're actually working on a project with Sustainable Conservation, which is a nonprofit group. They're developing a platform that overlay our entire district, and we'll look at a bunch of different layers of data, including soil, crop types, costs of doing different recharge activities, and then it'll prioritize where to focus those activities. So that tool will allow us to determine the best ways to invest into recharge, whether it be a dedicated recharge basin, which involves purchasing the property, developing the basin, putting the infrastructure in, bringing power to it, putting the pumps in, and then operating and maintaining it. Is that better than just doing on-farm recharge program, meaning flooding agricultural fields? There's been a lot of research being done right now on impacts to crops, especially grapes and almonds. Flooding them with a couple feet of water, will it kill them? Will it harm the production or not? So they're, we're looking at ways to do that. We actually did some of that this year. The district made water available to our growers at no cost. And we had some growers spread it on, a lot of them on grapes, and they put a few inches out there, kind of flooded the fields. But that was a way to, with no investment in infrastructure, spread more water in our district.
Right. Interesting.
Councilman Oliver.
Tommy, thank you for coming out and presenting again. And I had the opportunity to serve on the groundwater JPA when that was in formation, and I thought it was very productive to have all the various water agencies and purveyors in the same room and talking out loud as far as plans moving forward, especially with SIGMA underway. And so I appreciate your leadership and MID's leadership in that capacity as well. I wanted to talk briefly or just maybe ask some very broad, general questions with regard to Temperance Flat. Obviously, we hear about it all the time. It's, you know, we've known about it for many years. It's probably, or many decades. But for pre-1914 appropriative rights holders like MID, are there any preliminary estimations as to what that allotment might be if that project were to ever come online?
Sure.
I mean, maybe on a broad level, if you can?
Yeah. That's a tough question, because I could spend an hour talking about that, and it is an evolving topic also. As you know, there was a JPA formed with a lot of county representatives to chase the Prop 1 funding for that project, and that has been active. Friant Water Authority, which Madera Irrigation District is a member of, was not supporting the project and the approach that was being taken through Prop 1 until recently. Now, there is a completely new approach that Friant is leading that effort of modeling it as a, simply a storage reservoir, thinking of it as an offline storage reservoir. And by doing that, you wouldn't be opening up all of the water rights issues. Who gets an allocation of this? All the existing contracts stay in place. You just simply have a place to park water. And so anyone could buy into that. But it's easy said, but there's obviously complications in that. But it is taking a new form now. The Bureau Reclamation did pull back the feasibility study, which limited some of those options and how it could take shape and how the project would be managed. And it's opening that back up to this new concept, which I think could get all of the water agencies behind it, because it would not open up the big can of water rights and who gets priority to waters and contracting issues. So that's the new approach. I think you're going to be hearing a lot more of that in the very near future from Friant and from others, and from potentially new JPAs being formed to kind of spearhead that effort.
Thank you, and I appreciate that update and background. And if they were to, you know, pursue kind of the previous approach, how do you see, even though you have increased capacity, but obviously that's entangled with, you know, different water rights issues and where the water's going to be moving, but what impacts would that present on MID if, you know, they're just building additional capacity, keeping the water cool, moving it elsewhere? Or in some years, when you're at, you know, 100% capacity, you do have floodwater releases?
Right. So some of the original concerns that the district has, if you're taking and storing now those flood flows and you have such a small yield, I think it was only like 40,000 acre feet, you're really losing those opportunities for those flood flows, which are key to our recharging efforts. So that cheap water in those surplus years now may be committed to environmental purposes or to some other contract, and now you've lost your lifeline, which is that unlimited flood flow period.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem Galligos.
Again, thank you, Mr. Greasy, for coming out tonight. I just had, just an FYI. We had, I guess, MID had a break in a line on one of our streets in the city. And you were doing some work there, and we were pumping that line dry to work on it while water was running down the street. And you know, Madera residents were trying to tell them to conserve water. So I'm getting the phone calls, and I called our engineering, I called their public works, and nobody knew what was happening. And there was a generator there pumping it, but no truck or person to really respond to residents. So I was given information to call MID, called MID, and finally got answers after probably a 45-minute go-around, trying to figure out what's going on. So I know we partner with you, and we work real well, and our staff does great things with your staff. But if maybe we could, our staff could get a heads up if we're working on a line in the city, so that when they get the phone calls, they kind of know what to say. Because I was like, could they, if it was us, I would hope that we would have ran the line onto the medium and at least watered some trees. But it was going down the gutter, and we had residents that were like freaking out that we're wasting water, what's going on here? And I didn't have answers. have answers.
Yeah. No, that's definitely a reasonable request. We can make sure we reach out to the city when we're going to do activities like that.
Great. Thank you so much. I truly appreciate that.
Councilman Robinson.
Hi, Tommy. A great, you know, you know, display. I was wondering, you know, like, they said that Fresno River, you know, all the sand in there, that water for recharging is, is great for that area. Is that true?
Absolutely. There's a lot of really good recharge areas in the district, including some areas, sections of the Fresno River. As you notice, we've been running water down that. We still are today.
Oh, okay.
We're making some deliveries off of that system, but we're also doing it for the benefit of putting some additional water in the ground. That's a great spreading area to put water in the aquifer, and obviously being right through the middle of the city, it's going to benefit the city's wells also.
Thank you.
Great question. Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes. Good evening, Tom. Talking about the groundwater conservation and all, what kind of partnerships do you foresee with the city of Madera here as far as trying to sustain our groundwater? And what kind of efforts can we expect to see from the MID?
Yeah. So, because of the overlap, there's, that creates a lot of opportunity. For one, and we are doing it now, but we need to look for other ways to do it. The city is installing more retention basins for the stormwater system. Is there ways we can use that to put water in there? Example, right now, we have potentially extra water we could be dumping into some of these facilities, but it takes infrastructure to get it there. So, identifying those basins, which really take a lot of water, and prioritizing those and connecting up, and potentially allowing us to, to use those facilities when we have extra supplies. Looking at other opportunities, I mean, the golf course, can we use surface water to irrigate that and shut those wells off to keep that water in the aquifer? Or does it make sense, long, long-term, should we be looking at surface water for the district, or for the city to use in some fashion? Is it more of a recharge effort? Is it actually a surface water treatment plant? I don't know. I don't have those answers. But if that's the answer, that's a twenty, thirty-year project. We need to start talking about it now.
And that's kind of where I was referring to, is something in that nature of a, a surface water treatment plant. I know that staff here has made it clear that it's a big project, and it takes quite a bit of money. But nevertheless, it's something that I think that we should definitely start talking about here soon, because twenty, thirty years down the line goes pretty quickly. And this, I would hate for this to come up here ten, fifteen years down the line, where we can start a good partnership now, and possibly start setting aside funds or what have you, to get something like that going in the near future.
Yeah. And, and you just look to the, well, I'd say south of here, and you can see what's going on with the partnerships between the irrigation districts, the flood control districts, and the city being Fresno. They have basins all over the city, which they're recharging in. They have a surface water contract, which they supplement their groundwater supplies. So, I mean, that, that is potential future for, as the city continues to grow, we need to be looking at that, because just for amending our contracts would take a significant amount of effort, just to be able to potentially use that supply.
Now, I'm sorry, last but not least, that price that you mentioned there, would that be considered, and I'm not someone that knows about water much, but is that an attractive price for a city to buy water at?
Yeah. So, it's, it's all relative. I'll just give you an example. There were growers paying seventeen hundred dollars and fifty cents an acre foot for irrigation supplies just a couple of years ago. You had Westside Ag Interest buying water at over twenty-five hundred dollars an acre foot. So, you know, we're delivering water to our growers at ninety-five dollars, and that's in the higher end of our historic numbers, but it's still, in our mind, a very reasonable number for water.
Okay. And again, I'm sorry, and, you know, I don't know too much about water, but you talked about parking your water there. So, in a case where you have droughts, how does MID conserve its water, aside from these basins or what have you? Where do you, can you conserve water in a certain fashion where it's, it's larger than, I don't know, reservoirs or what have you?
Yeah. It's, it's interesting. You know, conservation was big in the ag industry, and we took our flood irrigation systems offline and put in micro and drip irrigation. The problem with that is then that on-farm recharge that occurred historically has now gone away. So, you know, we, as we all put all this money into infrastructure to conserve, that really limited our surface water usage. And with the price going up, growers are using even less, which then results in less going into the aquifer, or I wouldn't call it waste, but that water that wasn't taken up by the plant, which made its down, system down into the soil and ended up in the aquifer. So, that's something that's happened over the last twenty years. We need to go back to flood on years like this, where everybody can turn their drip systems off and flood their fields and put extra water on to keep it saturated and actually put it into the aquifer.
It's funny you say that, because when I do drive by and I see these fields that are flooding, you would think the opposite. Hey, we're in the need of water, but it works the opposite, right? You'd need during these wet years to have more of these, so that we can recharge our, our groundwater. Is that what you're saying, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And recharging, putting excess surface water into the ground is actually helping the water quality too, by essentially creating dilution. So, as we all know, the water table declines, there's less groundwater there, the concentration of all the different chemicals that we don't like, and especially in drinking water, continue to build, and it's even impacting agriculture now. So, you're seeing it not only on a water supply, but a water quality issue. So, being able to put more surface water in the ground is going to also help our water quality locally.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Tommy. And as we do look into the future, ten, twenty years down the road, one, we do have to start somehow, but, but it starts with that education and, and partnering with you and making those difficult and expensive decisions. But the more information you can give us, the better. So, we really appreciate you coming down and look forward to you coming down again.
Yeah. More than welcome. And this was a very high-level presentation, so as you get more specific topics, SIGMA, whatever, I'm more than happy to come back and discuss that with you guys.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, at some point, that was, there was a time when the Madera City Council would meet regularly with the board, be it biannually or, or whatever. Is that something that maybe Mr. Tulley, we could look forward to doing in the future? I don't know if Mr. Gracie would like to take that back to his board, but an opportunity where the Madera City Council might be able to sit and have open dialogue, or, or bring a couple of issues that, you know, maybe some that were brought up by Councilmember Rodriguez, looking thirty years down the road, maybe something looking five years down the road?
Briefly, excuse me, through the chair council member, I think that's an excellent idea. When I arrived in Madera, I, I got to participate in the, the last of those meetings that took place. I think it's an excellent practice, and I'd be happy to coordinate with my counterpart. My, my sense is that surface water is going to play a role in our future well in advance of twenty years.
SIGMA, I think it's important that we have that open dialogue and, and be able to ourselves be informed, and who knows what could come of that relationship.
I'll contact Tommy, and we'll start to coordinate schedules, if that works for you, Tommy.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there any council member wishing to further elaborate or pull any consent item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
The consent calendar has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item C1, second reading and consideration of adoption of an ordinance amending section five dash five point one three of chapter five of title five of the Madera Municipal Code pertaining to water restrictions. Mr. Randall.
As you know, we've, we've visited this issue extensively before, and staff would continue to recommend adoption of the item before you. Be glad to answer any questions you might have, though.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions of Mr. Randall at this time? Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes. David, I just wanted to confirm, as, as I was looking through the ordinance here, or the adoption of the ordinance, it states that the, this becomes effective as of the thirty-first of the passage of this adoption, correct?
Correct.
Am I correct in saying that?
Correct. Thirty-first day after its adoption.
I might have overspoke some people, so I wasn't sure. I, I thought we had this as of thirty-first of this last month. So, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, through, if I may, through the chair council member, I suspect there won't be any really strict enforcement on two a day between now and then.
Great.
Good bet.
Well, thank you. It's a nice trade-off for those that are watching the council meeting via live stream. If there's no further questions, I will ask for title.
Adoption of an ordinance amending section five dash five point one three of chapter five of title five of the Madera Municipal Code pertaining to watering restrictions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive further reading and adopt.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to waive further reading and adopt the ordinance as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Item C2, public hearing and consideration of a resolution establishing appropriation limits for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Mr. Prisbilla.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The appropriation limit needs to be set each year. We typically do that around the time of budget preparation, and this is the step that is being taken tonight, this, this evening. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, but we are well under or within our appropriation limits with the, a budget that's been approved by council already.
As we usually are. Tim, thank you very much. Any questions of Tim regarding this particular item? Thank you, Tim, very much. This is a notice public hearing, so I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak, either in favor or against this particular item. Any comments whatsoever? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item C2 as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C2 as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. We will move on to council reports. I'm sure there's lots to report this evening, so let's start to my far right with Councilman Robinson.
Yes. I had a fantastic time in the National Night Out against crime. You know, I attended four different events, and I enjoyed it, and I met more of our citizens.
Great.
It was great. Thank you.
Fantastic. Mayor Pro Tem, I know you had a long list of places to be.
Hey, before she do, Ms. Mayor, I think she outdid us. Don't, you know that? I think she hurt us last night. She did something that was really hurting, hurting, man, hurting.
You talking about the pie?
Yeah. You know I'm talking about it. Golly.
Well, let's let her give her report and her version of it.
I wanted to take our residents that, that are my neighborhood watch, and anyone else I went to visit last year, did candy. And in my area, there's not a lot of children, so the candy wasn't like, ooh, exciting. So, I thought, I'll take a case of water. And that's one thing I wanted to mention. Public Works also followed each of, of the council members up here to each location and had it ice cold water to whoever needed it, which a lot of people needed it last night, because it was really hot. So, the case of water was out of the question, so I decided I'd bake something, but being a hundred and five, hundred and eight, and even though I stay up late, I'd have to bake a lot of cookies or cakes. So, I decided it'd be easy, save the air conditioning bill, and bought pies, and put a National Night Out label on them and handed them to every neighborhood watch that I attended. So, that's all. I didn't make them homemade, so I should get some kudos for that. It wasn't homemade. But I had a great time. We had a, a lot of community members that came out and challenged the heat. Again, my neighborhood watch had a, a little bit of older crowd, and they had difficulties with the high humidity, but they were, this was an important event for them to be out there. And I got a lot of kudos about everybody that, in our staff, that had put an effort to make this a wonderful event, and how they're going to attend the Madera Connect on Thursday, hoping that the heat would maybe go down a little bit, which, but I said, hey, Chief Fraser and Mayor Madilla are going to be the dunk tank. It's worth going out for. So, they're like, ooh, we're going to be there. One last thing I'd like to mention, Mayor Madilla, is we had a resident, I guess, come into City Hall, was very concerned about our flag up front, and our city clerk, Sonia, handled it with ease and courtesy and politeness, and was very impressed. And so, I'd like to thank Sonia again for handling the flag situation out front.
I have no doubt. First line of defense, Senator Tony, thank you so very much for that. And that's no lie. Was there anything else, Mayor Pro Tem?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Rigby?
Well, I probably shouldn't say I had a horrible time last night, right? That wouldn't be good, because I didn't. I had a blast. And it was a well-organized event, from, from sweating it out over at the old courthouse to the very last hot dog going down at about nine-thirty last night. So, that was, that was fun for me. I'm on the side of town, though, where I get a lot of tamales, so that was good. I'm, I'm forever thankful of that. I am curious, though, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have this conversation again with our, our neighborhood revitalization team. I did some homework to find out that there are actually two National Night Out dates, and one's in October. And that date in October is utilized by Florida and Texas for the reason that has been asterisk, severe weather. Now, I don't know what last night would be considered, but it, it felt pretty severe. I noticed that numbers were down in my neighborhoods immensely. And, you know, I, I don't know if that's something that we could consider, if that's something maybe we could, maybe chief knows a little bit more about it. I don't know. But if that's something, you know, if, I, I know that the date is the first Tuesday of August, but I also know that Florida and Texas have been given leeway, and we're way better than Florida. So, I don't see why we couldn't maybe petition for the opportunity to participate in the October date. Other than that, though, that's all I have to, to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I noticed you didn't say we were better than Texas. You looked right at Mr. Tulley when you said that.
He, he was reaching for the water bottle. I thought he was going to throw it.
We are better than Texas. You raised a very interesting point. There's multiple meetings leading up to NNO, and I do believe there's a meeting afterwards, like any good group would do, and kind of critique all the things that went well, and maybe some of the things that, that did not go so well. So, I, there was a number of people that expressed either the time, push it back a little bit later, or, yeah, the time of the year. So, that's a, that's a very good point. I think we need to explore that, so that we can have as many people participate as, as possible in the future. But the food's always good. I had, I had some of the, the food in your district, and that was very good. Councilman Holly, I know you always have a, a large number of people in your district participate every year.
Yeah. You know, kind of, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was kind of slow last night. It was, I don't really believe it was caused of the heat. I just think a lot of times it's caused of people not being able to get to places sometime and want to, you know, turn out. But Cece kind of made me feel kind of bad, because I didn't get to get all those pies to take to all my neighborhood. But I did cook hot dogs, cooked over a hundred hot dogs and delivered them to one of the sites. So, I felt a little good after that, after she told me all the pies went out. But going around town, I had a few issues that I will be dealing with, with RDA on some things that happen in their neighborhoods. And, but I went to Believers Church, and man, they stepped up. They had something I had never seen in a while that brought a lot of people out, and it was awesome. I thought I was going to a, who knows, a big old party or something. They had the whole parking lot full. And it was exciting, because that's the first time they had one. And for, to see that big turnout for the first event made me feel, wow, they really stepped to the plate. But all the rest of them was nice. I attended eight. Some was big and some was small, but just going out and sharing with people, it was a good deal. Seen some folks I hadn't seen in twenty years, couldn't believe it, that they were still in Madera. But, you know, when you go out, you bring back people that you haven't seen in a while and wondering where they are, and they somehow come out to a event like this, makes you feel good. But let me tell you about the heat. Don't worry about the heat. When you move to Madera in the valley, you expect it. It's period. You can't change it. We didn't know it was going to be a hundred and seven, a hundred and six, but just think about the coolness that you got a couple weeks ago. So, that's the valley.
Good point.
That's it.
Good point. Thank you, Councilman Holly. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, Mayor Madilla. First of all, I'd like to ask who the gentleman is standing next to, or sitting next to Commander Lawson, Commander Dawson there. Don't, we'll recognize without a uniform.
With a shirt on.
The chief there.
The uniform is so soaked, it's going to take several days to dry out and get back to the tent.
I figured it was. Well, thank you. I wanted to thank you and your staff for everything you guys did yesterday. You know, a lot, got a lot of kudos from all the National Night Out events that, that occurred yesterday. I did get an opportunity to attend about eight of nine. The largest one that I did attend was the Pastor Tim's, and, you know, that was at least over a hundred. The code enforcement, Donaldson swore that it was about three hundred, but I, I thought it was more like a hundred. It was quite hot out there. But nevertheless, I wanted to thank Police Department, Fire Department, probation, and all the partners and organizations that put that together. This is my first event, and I had a blast. Really good opportunity to really meet a lot of the constituents out there and really get to see what they're, what they're talking about, their concerns. And most of all, I, I think they're just happy to be out there, and, and it was good to see them, that they have a lot of pride in, in Madera and protecting their neighborhood. So, again, thank you all, staff, everybody, for, for putting this together.
Pastor Tim always has a large group. I'm not sure if he reached three hundred, but I, I am definite it was closer to two hundred than, than one hundred.
Well-
It just depends on when you go, and that counts all the kids as well.
No offense, Mr. Mayor. I did have a young lady come up to me and ask me if I was a mayor, and I regretfully said I wasn't. I didn't have a-
I, I didn't have a picture. I didn't have a picture.
What? You didn't take that?
Was it a complaint?
You know, no, actually.
You can take that one. Right, Donald? If one of us is there, we're all there.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
As a matter of fact, I actually just wanted to get to know her mayor, and I said, you know what? I think you'll be coming around. If not, you'll get an opportunity to see him over at, on Thursday, so make sure you ask for Mayor Madilla. But I didn't have a picture of you. Next time, I'll make sure I carry one.
Well, if she thought you were the mayor, then I'm going to take that as a huge compliment.
Now, you had one in that, I think we had that presentation we had over at the food bank, so I'll take one of those, and I'll make sure I carry that in my wallet.
One of the big eight-by-10 ones. That would be great. That would be great. Thank you so much for that. Councilman Oliver.
There's not a whole lot to add. I think my colleagues summarized it very well. I, I will mention that within a minute of showing up at the Fillmore National Night Out neighborhood, I got challenged to a super soaker contest by a few five and six-year-old girls, and within like five seconds, just kill shot right to the face, glasses almost off my head, you know, drenched. It was super fun, and to my regret also, you'll probably see a video of me soon attempting to ride a mechanical bull at the food fair market on Cleveland and D Street, so that was one heck of a way to, to end the night, but, yeah, it was, it was a great time. I appreciate Mary Bell with our revitalization department for slugging me around, and kudos to the staff and, and for well-organized and coordinated effort. I wanted to take a quick moment, too, to provide an update, as well as thanks on our solar streetlight project. As most will probably recall, last year during our community development block grant proceedings, we funded a pilot project to install solar streetlights in areas of town that lacked the underground electrical service points, as well as are high crime and, and need, and staff during this time has worked diligently to do so. So, I'd like to thank Dave Randall and Mr. Thule and our revitalization team for coordinating Neighborhood Watch and bringing some of those concerns to light, especially at the, at our Harding Street neighborhood team, as well as Sonora. Last night, attending the Sonora Neighborhood Watch National Night Out meeting, you could see some of those solar streetlights up and running, and so the residents were quite pleased. And I'd also like to thank, most importantly, Phil Johnson, who was our Electrical and Facilities Operations Manager. Last year, he took time out of his schedule in the evening to come out and get out of the car on foot, see some of the areas that are, are quite in need and meet with neighborhood residents, and I think he was instrumental in, in shepherding that project through. So, I just wanted to thank my colleagues and, and thank our staff and obviously neighborhood and community leaders for making that project a reality.
Thank you very much for that, and you're absolutely right. Obviously, the theme was to get out into the community and, and meet folks and establish that, a new relationship or, or continue with the relationship that we have with everybody. And, and it shows, there's a positive vibe in the community through Neighborhood Watch and self-policing and, and bringing City Hall to the streets, and we, as, as we have said. I've participated in National Night Out every, every year since it's happened, but this was my first year as mayor, so I got to get out of District Two and, and get to go, spend some time with some other folks in different parts of the city. And last night, I said, it's going to be a long time before I have another hot dog tomorrow. Tomorrow, I will have another hot dog for sure. And so, it really is a, a great effort by all to, to want to make this community a wonderful community and a great, safe place to live, and so I would like to continue with that with Neighborhood Watch as we do all year long, because we've, I've spent many Neighborhood Watch with a coat and scarf on in a driveway, and, and I do remember, Mr. Councilman Holly, that it's not always hot all the time. But the value that we gain from that in this community is second to none. I do know the county of Madera is following our lead with this.